Planning Board Meeting for April 8, 2024, City Council Chambers. Roll call.
Gilad Tchakka?
Here.
Carlina Melendez?
Here.
Suzanne Corlewicz?
Here.
Chris Pelletella? Anthony Camione? Diana Lopez?
Here.
Zach Wright?
Here.
Mike Blackwell? Joshua Beef? Bob Cardika? John Cox?
Here.
Public announcement?
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, in case sufficient notice, and the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the Planning Board of the City of Brunswick have been filed with the City Clerk and placed on an appropriate bulletin board at the lobby of City Hall, 78 Bayers Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and have been transmitted to official newspapers in the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home and Tribune and Star.
Move the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, the Constitution of the United States of America, the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Members of previous board meeting hearings.
So we have consideration for the board today with minutes of the November 13th meeting. Eligible voting members who are present are Gilad Tchakka, Suzanne Corlewicz.
Motion.
Thank you. Okay, Gilad Tchakka?
Yes.
Suzanne Corlewicz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolutions?
We have a resolution here for our LRFI George. This was the signed variance application from last month. I'll just double check on eligible members who are present today. So Gilad Tchakka, Carlina Melendez, Zach Wright, and John Cox.
Motion.
Thank you.
So that was motion. Is that? And who seconded it, Gilad Tchakka? All right, thank you. Okay. So Gilad Tchakka?
Yes.
Carlina Melendez?
Yes.
Diane, oh wait, no, Diane Melendez. Zach Wright?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing, 10 French Street, New Brunswick, Two Urban Renewal Associates LLC, SJP Properties, also known as Phase Two Helix Nokia at New Brunswick Block 17.01, Lot 1.02 PB-2024-02. Preliminary and final major site plan and major subdivision applications constructed 11-story research office building containing 415,000 square feet as part of Phase Two of the Helix project, Tom Kelsall has filed.
Members of the board, Thomas F. Kelsall, on behalf of the applicant, New Brunswick Two Urban Renewal Associates LLC. It really is my honor to be here this evening representing this developer for this project. I think all the board members and members of the public that are here are from all the publicity associated with this new project. I think are somewhat familiar with what is being brought before you this evening with New Brunswick, I think, has had the good fortune of having Nokia Bell Labs choose this to be their new northeast regional headquarters. And I think it's a feather in the cap of the city of New Brunswick for, you know, what we have become in an urban setting of being able to attract this type of user and these developers for purposes of carrying forward the mission of transforming the downtown in this aspect of the revitalization. The application this evening, as I've indicated, is New Brunswick Two Urban Renewal Associates LLC. That applicant is a partnership between New Brunswick Development Corporation, as you know, who has spearheaded the Helix overall project and was the redeveloper for the first phase, together with SJP Properties of Parsipony, who are a participant, redevelopment entity, for purposes of partnering with New Brunswick Development Corporation to carry out this Phase Two of the Helix project. The application itself, as indicated by the chair, is for preliminary and final site plan and subdivision approval to subdivide what is the existing lot 102 and Block 1701, which is a lot that was previously created by the subdivision when we did Phase One. And it's being transformed into proposed three new lots, one of which will be a new lot 104, which will contain this project. A second lot, 106, which is intended to be the, what we call the Paseo, which is essentially the public space between the first building and this building. And then the Lot 105, which is the remainder of this whole redevelopment area, the Farren redevelopment area, which will be held for Phase Three future development. So overall, we're right in the middle, I think, of transforming the old Farren redevelopment site into a brand-new, modern destination, if you will, for transforming, we hope, the region with respect to research, development, incubation of new businesses, which forms a part of what the first Helix building was for, as well as the home of the Rutgers Medical School, as well as the collaboration between the various hospitals in the region. So it's a very exciting project. This is a major component for same, and, you know, we think it's something that we hope the board will find to be an important aspect that is in need and certainly deserving of approval. As I've indicated to you, the new lot 104 will contain the 11-story building, which is calling for approximately 415,000 square feet. It's an 11-story building, which will house the Nokia Bell Labs with a state-of-the-art office and research building on that lot. As I've indicated, the remaining two lots will be then for the Paseo and future development. I mentioned, and the subject property is located within the Farren redevelopment area, and this development is in full compliance with the Farren redevelopment plan. I would also indicate that the parking component of this project is intended to be housed in the existing wellness center parking garage. There is a significant amount of free spaces in that facility that the Parking Authority has committed to this project, a minimum of 259 spaces, which is the requirement under the plan, but up to 500 spaces to the extent that demand requires that. So the parking is being taken care of through the components of the redevelopment plan that allow for the utilization of the parking in that facility for this project. My intent this evening is to provide four witnesses for you. The first witness will be Chris Palladino, representing the developer component here. We are very familiar with Chris and his reputation and the leadership of New Brunswick Development Corporation. I would also be calling for testimony Mr. Matt Corliss, who is a representative of Nokia, to be able to provide to you a little bit of the thought process of Nokia in arriving to the conclusion to come to New Brunswick, as well as give you a sense of what the expectation is here for this facility. And then I will call the two professional witnesses, our civil engineer, Chris Roach, and Mike Mastriano, who is the architect of the project. So that is an overview unless there's any questions for me. I would call for my first witness, Mr. Chris Palladino.
I just want to ask the board, does anybody on the board have a conflict with this application? Seeing none, okay.
Okay, thanks. Chris, let me get sworn.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Christopher Palladino, P-A-L-L-D-I-A-N-O.
Do you swear or from tell or will you confess nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Your answer is yes.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, various professionals.
Mr. Kelsall.
I appreciate that I'm under oath. But I don't believe that it's hyperbole to suggest the historic significance of this application and this project. And New Brunswick has had a whole tremendous amount of historical moments. 1766 Rutgers is founded, 1776 Alexander Hamilton staves off General Cornwallis as Washington retreats to Princeton. In 1869, first collegiate football games played. 1886, Johnson &amp; Johnson is founded. Maybe just as important, in 1978, when I came to college at Rutgers, Johnson &amp; Johnson decided to stay and recommitted to the city and build its headquarters here. And Nokia Labs relocating New Jersey's most, to New Jersey's most exciting innovation center, the Helix, certainly hits those types of historic milestones. Governor Murphy's economic plan for New Jersey established a vision to return New Jersey to its rightful place as the innovation state. And this project is an opportunity to unlock the entrepreneurial spirit of Thomas Edison, Albert Einstein, Dr. Wachsman from Rutgers, Sarnoff, Claude Shannon from Bell Labs, for the next generation. On a more utilitarian note, Nokia's Bell Labs is very impactful. Nokia will bring an additional thousand mathematicians, physicists, electrical engineers, computer scientists to our downtown. Add to that the biologists and microbiologists and chemists, students, professors, that will be, and startup entrepreneurs that will be in the first Helix building. Well, that 2,500 people to our downtown on a daily basis. It has a tremendous impact to everybody who works and or lives here. The first two projects, H1 and H2, is unlocking about $40 million of value to the New Brunswick Parking Authority. And at a minimum, it's going to create an additional $3.2 million of property taxes on a daily basis to the city. The first two phases are already creating and will create thousands of construction jobs, oil union jobs, New Jersey building trade jobs. Less noise will probably be. And Nokia Bell Labs in H1 is going to basically create the dynamic for some public spaces that are being created. The Strand, I'm sure Mr. Corliss will talk about. The Technology Center that Nokia will have open to the public. The Nobel Winners Garden that will be put into the Strand. And this project really has accelerated the redevelopment and modernization of the New Jersey Transit, New Brunswick train station. We have seen an extraordinary acceleration of interest in the third building on the site. Are in discussions with a number of different entities and hope to be back to this board by the end of the year with our next application. So that we can get all of this done sometime before the end of 2028, before I get too old and can actually enjoy it. We've talked about, every time I've been before you for every building over the last 15 years, we were going to move into that building. This one, I think, we're finally going to do that and move difficult. So, look, I appreciate your attention and your consideration of what is a truly historic application and a truly historic one for our city. That's, thank you.
Unless anyone has questions for Mr. Palladino. I would add that he graduated from Rutgers in 78, is that what he said? And he's old?
No, I went and started there. You were long gone.
I'm the one that's getting old.
Any member of the board, have any questions for Mr. Palladino? That's what it's supposed to be.
At this time, I would call Mr. Matt Corliss for testimony.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Matt Corliss, C-O-R-L-I-S-S.
Do you swear or from tell or will you confess nothing about the truth?
I do.
Mr. Corliss, you are here tonight as a representative of Nokia Bell Labs, correct?
Correct.
And what is your title?
Director of Strategy and Technology.
I think that what I'd like you to do, if you could, is to just give the board a sense of the perception that Nokia, that Labs has. They're coming to New Brunswick, what the expectation is with respect to the operations in the building. Just to get a flavor, a little bit more depth than what Chris did.
Sure.
But I think it's important.
Sure. I'm the program leader responsible for Nokia to move our headquarters in Murray Hill to New Brunswick. Thank you for this opportunity to share how excited we are at Nokia Bell Labs to move to New Brunswick. Murray Hill has been our home for 80 years. Over those past 80 years, we've seen the development of the first transistor, the first solar cell, Telstar satellite, Unix, all these groundbreaking technologies that we've brought. Our focus now has changed a little bit. Our mission is the same in terms of advancing communications. But our mission now, our focus now is on photonics, quantum computing, artificial intelligence, 6G, the next generation of our cellular technology. We even are developing a cellular system to be deployed on the moon in the coming years. So when we decided to move, it wasn't taken lightly. We cast a wide net. When we looked for a home, we looked at 25 places in New Jersey and beyond. And in New Brunswick, we found a home, I think, that will meet not only the technology needs that we have for the facility, but also an environment here close to academia, thriving venture environment. And so we want to be part of that, who will be plugged into that that's going forward. Chris mentioned our Nobel Prizes. We won 10 Nobel Prizes. We've won Grammys, we've won Emmys, we even won an Oscar. We intend to bring all of those to New Brunswick. And we will build a tech showcase in our lobby that will be publicly accessible so that the public can see not only our past innovations, but also see what we're looking on, working towards the future. I think that kind of summarizes the position. So thank you, and I hope to make New Brunswick our home for the next eight years.
Anyone have any questions to come to this witness? Name of, your next witness.
Thanks.
Thank you.
At this time, I have a call, Mr. Christian Roach for testimony. No one's calling Christopher, he got that wrong.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Sure, it's Christian Roach, R-O-C-H-E.
Do you swear or from tell or will you confess nothing about the truth?
I do.
Mr. Roach, you have a period of court with this board and other boards in the past.
Many times.
Have your credentials changed in any way?
Just three months old, right? I think from the last night of the year.
We'll accept you as an expert in here.
If you could, Chris, then, rather than me ask you serious questions, if you could run through the civil engineering aspects of the overall site plan. Also, give us an overview of the subdivision that's being requested. And I believe that if there's any responses at all to Mr. Dr.'s report or not, we might want to just cover that also.
Sure, housekeeping matter, would you want me to note the exhibits now?
Yes.
So Exhibit A1 is entitled Existing Lot Configuration with Today's Date. Exhibit A2 is titled Proposed Lot Configuration, again with today's date. And lastly, Exhibit A3 is entitled Nokia at New Brunswick Site Plan Rendering with Today's Date. So the overall Helix site is 3.2 acres. It's generally bound by French Street to the north, Spring Street to the east, Patterson Street to the south, and Kirkpatrick Street to the west. The site is currently comprised of two lots. The first lot is identified as Block 17.01, Lot 1.03, which is approximately 1.12 acres. That's the lot where the H1 building is currently under construction. The remainder of the Helix site is identified as Block 17.01, Lot 1.02, and that's approximately 2.12 acres and contains the eastern and southern portions of the property. As I move to Exhibit A2, we are proposing subdivision as part of this application tonight. And what we're proposing to do is subdivide the aforementioned Lot 1.02 into three new lots. Those three lots will be Block 17.01, Lot 1.04, which will be approximately one acre. That lot will house the new H2 or Nokia building. Block 17.01, Lot 1.05, will be approximately 0.76 acres. That will contain the southern portion of the site. And then lastly, Block 17.01, Lot 1.06, which will be approximately 0.36 acres, will house the new Paseo or Plaza area. Most importantly, all three new lots are fully conforming with the Farren redevelopment plan. So as we move to Exhibit A3, what the applicant is proposing to construct on the property is a 11-story building with a ground floor footprint of approximately 37,000 square feet. In total, the building will provide 415,000 gross square feet. While the building does occupy the majority of the project area, we still are proposing a significant amount of sidewalk and hardscape area around the perimeter of the building, along with an access drive to the south, which was previously approved as part of the Phase One building. That access drive, it's a private road, it's not a public road. It's a one-way orientation, providing vehicles access from Spring Street, which is to the west, to Kirkpatrick Street. We're also proposing a drop-off at the northeast corner of the building, adjacent to Spring Street. That drop-off is approximately 100 feet in length. It allows for the queuing of fortified vehicles. The rationale behind the drop-off is we felt the drop-offs were going to happen here anyway. We want to get those drop-offs outside of the roadway area. We're fully compliant as well with the parking loading requirements of redevelopment plan. Just going through some quick math, redevelopment plan requires 0.6 parking spaces for 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. Using the 415,000 gross square feet, we're required to have 249 parking stalls, all of which will be provided in the wellness parking deck, which is located approximately 275 feet to the west of the proposed Nokia building. Within the wellness deck, we'll also be providing EV charging and ADA parking required stalls. We're required to have a minimum of 10 EV stalls and seven ADA stalls, which will also be provided at that location. Mr. Kelsall mentioned, we do have a letter from the Parking Authority stating they have the capacity to handle the parking at that location. From a loading perspective, according to the redevelopment plan, we're proposing to do our loading onsite. The onsite loading area will be adjacent to Spring Street. It has the capability to handle up to four vehicles. The largest vehicle it can handle is a WB67, tractor-trailer sized truck, and it can handle vehicles all the way down to typical trash and recycling operation vehicles. In order to accommodate the loading movement, we are proposing the removal of four parking stalls on Church Street and four parking stalls on Spring Street. I know there's an existing loading zone on Spring Street for the adjacent residential use. We are proposing to make that entire area a loading zone. Nokia is obviously not using that loading area full-time. They're just using it when they're backing their trucks in for a few minutes each day. And in the interim period, other loading activities can take place within that area. I'm sure the question is going to be asked, how many trucks are we talking about on a daily basis? We anticipate the larger truck variety up to a maximum of two. Those are WB67s. And then there'll also be some smaller trucks utilizing that area. One of the benefits of doing the loading onsite is once the trucks are able to back into the loading area, we have the ability to close the door within the loading area, meaning that we're not going to be inhibiting any movements on the sidewalks or within the roadway once we make the movements into the loading areas. Although just from a pattern perspective, we anticipate that the trucks will end up coming down Spring Street, they'll make the reverse movement into the loading area, and then they'll have the ability to leave to the north, either go westbound or eastbound on French Street. As I continue to make my way to the building, there is a proposed tankyard proposed at the southeast corner of the building. We will be providing oxygen and nitrogen tanks, and the architect will talk more about that here momentarily. I'll just note that those tanks are being designed in accordance with state federal requirements, needing all types of clearance and openness requirements for the screen going around that area. We are proposing some site landscaping as well as hardscaping around the perimeter. The plan is now called for two trees along Spring Street, based on some commentary from the city's planning consultant. We're agreeing to increase the amount of trees around the perimeter site from two to eight to be fully conforming with the redevelopment plan requirements. From a lighting perspective, we're proposing eight new LED light fixtures. These are standard PSNG light fixtures you see all around the city, and they have been located and designed as such to meet all photometric requirements. On the north side of the building, we're proposing three flag poles. Those flag poles will have a maximum height of 35 feet and have a maximum area of 60 square feet. There's three flag poles. We anticipate one will be the American flag. The second flag will be an Olympic flag. And then the third flag is going to change based on events of the year. It could be a state flag and it could also change as we have different historic ones. Most exciting part, store manager utilities. Store manager for the project was already designed for the H1 building to get a little bit of an matching system going between buildings, needing all applicable state, city, and county requirements. And then on utility end, a lot of the utilities were installed as part of the Phase One development specifically. We need to tend the middle line around the site. We've done some advanced work on the sanitary sewer system. Most of those connections will be tying into the existing systems in Spring Street. So, Mr. Kelsall, unless you have any other questions, I'll just state that we did have the letters from the planning consultant and the engineer. We have no objection, but for the compliance, the comments within those letters.
I have no further questions for Mr. Roach, if the board wishes to direct any.
Any member of the board, or professional, have any questions for this witness? Seeing none, your next witness.
Thank you. At this time, I have a call, Mr. Michael Mastriano for testimony. Michael, what we're going to want to do, as you're referring to each exhibit, we're going to want to mark them.
Yes, sir.
A1, A4.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Michael Mastriano, M-A-S-T-R-I-A-N-O.
Do you swear or from tell or will you confess nothing about the truth?
I do.
Mike, you're a licensed professional architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
In that capacity, you're familiar with the architectural design, interior and exterior of the proposed building?
That's correct.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Of course. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Architecture from the Catholic University in Washington, DC. I hold a Master's of Architecture from the Illinois Institute of Technology in Chicago, Illinois. I have 14 years of industry tenure. I hold my registrations in the state of New Jersey and in the state of New York.
And we'd offer Mr. Mastriano as a licensed professional qualified to provide architectural testimony?
Well, I'm a firm.
Thank you. Mike, if you could then, as an overview, give us an orientation of the building, its location, supplementing what Chris testified to. And then feel free to go through both the exterior and interior floors with regard to the building, give the board and the public an understanding of just exactly what's getting built.
Of course. Shall we run through the exhibits the way Christian did?
Yeah, you can do that. Probably makes it easier.
So Exhibit A4, titled Nokia at New Brunswick Building Rendering. Exhibit number two, or sorry, A5, titled Nokia at New Brunswick, we do floor plans. These will be three separate floor plans provided. Round floor, typical floors, and rooftop. Exhibit number A6, Nokia at New Brunswick Building Sections. And the final exhibit will come in four separate posters here. Nokia at New Brunswick Building Elevations, A7.
So starting with a sort of introduction to the H2 building. The H2 building, as was mentioned, is a 415,000, 415,000 square foot gross square foot office and research laboratory facility. It's designed to meet the vision of the sort of FERIN redevelopment plan. Which is sort of an architecture that's influenced by pedestrian-minded, transit-oriented, mixed-use developments. The sort of, as a signature piece of the Helix Development Building Program, which is sort of a mixed-use laboratory, high bay research conferencing in office workplace environments, is catered to, directly to the design criteria of the building anchor tenant, which is Nokia Bell Labs. Program, aside from the Nokia program, there's public program included within the building, namely a retail environment on the western elevation of the ground floor, which I'll talk about in a future exhibit here, which is facing the Paseo here between the H1 building and the H2 building, to sort of further drive home that community engagement and pedestrian experience. The building is sited across the street from the New Brunswick train station, which puts it at a perfect location for tying into the greater northeast corridor sort of transit region. It allows the face of the H2 building to sort of be the prominent face of the Helix Development. And also kind of be a hub for innovation, research, and collaboration within the development. The building features an all-glass curtain wall system. The curtain wall system provides a contemporary aesthetic. It also provides natural daylight into the occupant floors, as well as expansive views out into the surrounding city and the context. The building's curtain wall system and building systems are designed and engineered to the design standards of Nokia Bell Labs, which include an all-electric building with sustainability targets of LEED Gold Certified Building. Switch now to the floor plan exhibits, which will be A5. Starting with the ground floor. So the ground floor is an obvious, natural place to start to walk through the floor plans. We'll start at the ground floor, then we'll go to the typical floors, and then we'll end up at the rooftop. So at the ground floor, the sort of, the idea of the ground floor is to sort of enhance the pedestrian experience of the Helix Development as a whole. So one of the key programmatic pieces up front of the building that's doing that is the building lobby and program area located here in this beige color. So across the street from Albany Street, you'll find the main building entry here, which opens into this expansive lobby that acts as sort of a receiver or a collector for visitors and building occupants coming from the train station across the street, coming from rapid transit bus, ride share, and also personal vehicle parking that's based at the Wellness Center, the Wellness Plaza Garage that Chris mentioned. The lobby features an expansive and highly transparent glass structural glass curtain wall system. That again, not only allows daylight and visibility and community activation to that lobby, but also provides sort of a wayfinding element as a front piece of the building so that the building entrances are obvious and inviting. Keeping in sort of the spirit of that transparency, as we move down to the southwest portion of the building, here's the retail that I mentioned in the previous exhibit that opens onto the Paseo. That allows for, again, that community engagement and activation of the pedestrian experience along the Paseo. It's an important part of the FERIN redevelopment plan for that sort of pedestrian experience to be tied into the H2 building. As we move south in the plan to the southwest corner, you'll see all this gray space here is the back of house shipping, handling, and holding areas for the loading dock, the PSNG's electrical rooms, Nokia programmatic storage, and then the loading dock itself. As these back of house areas want to have visual screening, not have pedestrians looking into it, the building cladding, as you'll see in the elevations to come, is a stone masonry panel cladding, which allows that shielding to happen, but it also provides sort of a stately and solid base to the building to ground it into its context. The other advantage of the stone masonry panel system is we have opportunity to pull from some of the stone datums and scales that are germane to New Brunswick to bring sort of New Brunswick's local context into the facade of the new project as sort of an homage to the past. As we work along the south to the gas yard that Chris Roach mentioned, the gas yard contains gas storage tanks that are located alongside their supporting equipment on concrete pads. Around the gas yard is a screening element, so 53-foot tall metal mesh panel screen wall system. That I'll explain in a bit more detail when I touch onto the elevations. Now it's a good time to move up to the typical floors here. So in the typical floors, I'd kind of like to talk a bit now about the core and the way the core of the building is organized. When we talk about core, we're talking about vertical circulation, elevators, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, distribution, things of that nature. So the core is anchored in the center of the building, but justified to the west side along the Paseo here. So the centralized location of the core features two egress stairs and two banks of elevators. One of the banks to the north containing six passenger elevators. The bank to the south containing a freight elevator and a service elevator. The advantage of the centralized core from the egress stair standpoint is sort of compliance with code travel distances for first-of-livings, but also sort of a wayfinding trick to allow familiarity with where the stairs are in the plan and allow building occupants to reach the stairs easily and excessively, as the stairs will also contribute to communicating vertical circulation from floor to floor in the building. The advantage of the centralized core from the building infrastructure standpoint is the ability to run vertical mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and telecommunications services up and down the building from a central point location, and then feed them into the floor plate at a more economical and efficient run capacity. One other thing to note here about the typical floors is sort of the north-south orientation of the plan. So when I say north-south, the west and the east elevations have a more expansive surface area to them. Obviously, the west elevation, in the Paseo, has the core here. East elevation is set up on the upper floors to have transparent glass and views out over the Maryland River to the city, which we think is a very nice feature of this building for the occupant experience. Transition up to the roof. So on the roof, we have a variety of mechanical and electrical equipment mounted on the roof. You can see what we've tried to do here is centralize as much of the equipment on the roof as possible. And where that wasn't entirely possible, we've extended this roof parapet up 10 feet above the roof line to ensure that all of the equipment that's sitting on the rooftop is concealed or concealed from public and pedestrian views. So this is proved by sightline studies that we've done, taken from a variety of different public vantage points around the streetscape, and taking views up to make sure that that 10-foot datum is set appropriately with no mechanical equipment peers above the top of the parapet system. That's a good time to transition to the third exhibit, which is the STACK Building Sections. So the building sections will give us sort of a view of the height of the building and how the height is distributed across the floors. So the H2 building is 255 feet tall. It has 11 floors. Each of the floors has a 37,500 square gross square foot floor plate. On the typical floors, the floor-to-floor height is 18 foot tall. On the high bay research floors, the floor-to-floor height is 20 foot 8 inches tall. On the mechanical floors, the floor-to-floor height is 30 feet tall. And on the ultra-high bay research floors, the floor-to-floor height is 32 feet tall. The building elevations, which are, go hand in hand with this height discussion. I'd like to start with the north elevation. The north elevation is the most prominent elevation on the building due to its location facing the train hub and the connection to the northeast corridor that I mentioned earlier. So north elevation has the opportunity to become sort of the face of the Helix Development because of its relationship to that transit hub. So the curtain wall system, as I mentioned earlier, is articulated in three planes that are broken into smaller cassettes that have a faceted sort of articulation that break the scale of the curtain wall down to something more magnetically pedestrian than pedestrian-minded. Located on an upper level of the north elevation is an exterior balcony space. The balcony space allows for more enhanced views out to the, to the urban fabric, but also provides a amenity space for building occupants and ties to H2 premier face directly into its context. The last thing to note on the north elevation is one top-of-house sign at the top of the building. And again, the location for this top-of-house sign is because of the prominence of the location of this building face. The top-of-house sign will read Nokia Bell Labs. And that signage, in terms of its size, its lighting, and its location within the facade, will all be designed in accordance with the requirements of the FERIN redevelopment plan standards. Moving to the east elevation, around the east corner of the building, you'll notice that there are a few architectural louvers that are distributed along the elevation. The louvers serve as mechanical intake and exhaust for the air system for the building. You'll see that the louvers are deployed on the east and on the north, south elevations, because we consider these the low-traffic elevations of the building. And by low-traffic, I mean that the north elevation is discussed as the prominent face. The west elevation is being discussed as the Paseo face. So the east and the south are sort of the lower pedestrian experience faces of the building, which is why the louvers are sort of programmed there. So they're less sighted from a more populous urban pedestrian experience. As Chris mentioned in detail, the loading dock here down at the bottom, located on the ground floor in the southeast corner. The loading dock is sized to accommodate four loading bays. Two of those loading bays can accommodate 53-foot-long delivery vehicles, which is the largest delivery vehicle that's expected for this facility. At the southeast corner, we have the tank screen wall, tankyard screen wall. So like I mentioned, this is a 53-foot-tall expanded metal mesh panel system. The panel metal mesh has an openness ratio to it to allow for ventilation that's in performance with New Jersey and the National Building Code, and as well as the vendor requirements, specific gas vendor requirements that's going to be maintaining the tanks inside of the yard. The panelization of this particular mesh allows us to put door, access doors that are screen-lined and fairly concealed for the tank drivers to arrive and fill maintenance and service of the tanks with inside of the yard. The south elevation provides a larger view of the tankyard screen around the corner here. And then again, louvers on the south elevation in discreet locations. And a transition to that masonry facade that I was speaking to earlier that we hope to tie into the urban fabric and sort of pull from the more germane masonry configurations within the city of New Brunswick. And lastly, I would talk about the west elevation, which is the Paseo side elevation. So the west elevation, at the ground floor, has the retail component, public program that I mentioned that opens out onto the Paseo. Again, it allows the retail to be connected to that vibrant pedestrian corridor of the Paseo. Also very transparent would be the communicating or the egress stairs that I mentioned when I described the floor plans. So these stairs will be visible all the way up the building as building occupants will be communicating from floor to floor. We believe that this sort of visibility is an activator and again, kind of connects the Paseo and H1 to the activity within H2 so that, again, it's a more kind of pedestrian building occupant experience connection. And the last thing to note here about the west elevation is in the southwest corner of the west elevation, there is considered a approximately 1,700-square-foot area for a mural or art wall, which we believe will again, allow for community engagement and bring in a sort of pedestrian-based experience to the architecture.
I have no further questions for Mike, if the board wishes to direct any.
Any member of the board or professional having questions for this witness? Same note.
That completes our presentation up to the board.
At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. If anyone from the public has any questions or comments on this application, please come forward. Council, please come forward.
Please state your name, start your last name for the record.
Yes, Charlie Crowe, K.R.I.T.O.V.I.L.
You start from tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening. I'll be as brief as possible, but I do have a number of questions. I guess I wanted to start with the environmental situation there, because I didn't hear that mentioned. So I know there was a memorandum in the record, March 28. Underground storage tank was removed in 2022, but there's also two off-site contamination sources, including one that appears to not have been resolved. And this is the contamination that actually came from the county complex right across the street. It was discovered in 1989. It's a long time ago. What's happening with the contamination there from the map?
Chris, can you answer that question?
Sure, so the county remediation, Charlie, has been ongoing for the last few years. There's been several treatment methods utilized, including ejection wells. We're nearing the end of that ongoing remediation, and we anticipate that there will be no effects on the proposed construction as that remediation wraps up. The county has their own licensed site remediation professional who's handling that ongoing work.
Okay.
That'd be CMA? Correct.
Okay. I just, it seems like it's been close to being finished for all the time that I've been asking about it. So I don't, I don't know, like, what additional milestones need to be met to be complete?
A lot of the ongoing remediation work, it just takes time. You're doing injections to try and reduce concentrations. Sometimes that can happen very quickly. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, based on the most recent data. We've seen trending in the right direction, very promising. It should be done in the very near future.
Okay. And how about the other off-site source? That'd be the, they call it new swift cleaners, I guess, contamination at the 101 Patterson Street site?
That's being handled by an additional licensed site remediation professional, an LSRP from Woods Newton Consulting, a firm. At this point in time, we anticipate no impacts on not only this building, but also the H1 building as a result of that ongoing work.
Thanks for addressing those questions. I did have some more. There's a reference to rapid transit bus. We don't have that in New Brunswick, do we? This may be forward-looking, but I'm not missing something. We don't have rapid transit buses here.
It is forward.
We should.
The parking space removal, that would require approval from city council, not the parking authority, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The electric vehicle charging stations that would be added to the wellness, who's paying for them? Where does that?
Developer.
The developer, okay. The tankyard was mentioned several times, but I don't know if it was mentioned explicitly why we need to have oxygen nitrogen tanks for this facility? Can somebody put that on the record?
Mike, you want to answer?
Sure. Nokia will be advancing their research and development and sort of technical innovation within the facility. And what that means is sort of an advancement in the research and experimentation, which would include quantum computing, optical research, AI, and industrial technologies. In order to support this research, the tanks which contain nitrogen and oxygen provide environmental controls that support that research.
I saw references to truncated domes. I don't know what exactly those are. What is a truncated dome and where are they going to be?
It's on the sidewalk, Charlie. It's an indication for potentially blind people as you're walking.
Corner.
At the corner, exactly.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
The red and...
Yeah, and I guess the remaining questions have to do with... Yeah, and I guess the remaining questions have to do with the project overall. I've heard mentioned 2028 is when the company says they want to move in. Is that still the understanding of completion opening by January 2028?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And I know it's not explicitly the application, but there was a reference made to H3. Is there any timeline on that or any, you know, consideration of how that would fit in with, you know, this type of use?
We hope, as I said, to be before this board, hopefully by the end of the year. We're assessing options, a variety of different potential tenants and a variety of, it'll be a mixed use building most likely, and it'll be on the remaining parcels.
Okay. And I guess I just wanted to ask about the partnership with Devco and SJP. Is it a 50-50 partnership or what's the extent of the nature of the agreement there?
Devco is the controlling partner.
Okay. And what role does SJP play then?
They're a partner.
Okay.
It's a combination because they develop together, they're funding, you know, joint funding, all of those things that come into play.
Okay. Was that my time or something? Okay, well, I'll yield the floor then. Thank you for answering my questions. Good luck.
Thank you. Any other member of the public have any question, comment on this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. I'll be able to.
Other than to say it again, this is really an exciting project for the city. The second in the series of hopefully three fantastic developments that really going to change the nature of the downtown. And Chris mentioned before about the train station, and I think I want to emphasize that. You know, obviously there's between transit and the county and MCIA ongoing development of the train station. Hopefully, that's going to advance itself fairly quickly to the extent of hopefully being close to being available when these buildings are open. Otherwise, I defer to the board.
Mr. Kasa understands to be a redevelopment project in a redevelopment zone. There are no deviations requested and no waivers requested.
No, correct.
So, I'll read the conditions.
Please.
All right. Should Board Act favorably, the following conditions shall apply. Compliance with the terms of the City Engineer Report dated April 2nd, 2024. Submission of unnecessary easements and cross-access agreements reviewed and approved by Board Attorney and City. April 5th?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Updated. Prior to filing the same, payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed by the City Engineer, submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering and inspection fees in an amount calculated pursuant to Title 16.24060, water and sewer connection fees, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 13.04 and 13.08, issuance of a road opening permit from City Engineer required, compliance of the terms of the Big No, planning report dated April 3rd, 2024, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated postapproval reviews, payment of any other fees due to the City of New Brunswick related to development or use of this project, payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees, Middle 6th County Planning Board approval or waiver, DNR Commission approval or waiver, Freehold Soil Conservation District approval or waiver, filing of subdivision in accordance with the MAP Filing Act, submit engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing, submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. No, no, no. All utilities and site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at show expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary approaches to the public right of way shall require City Council approval. All construction staging shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing it to the public right of way is approved by City Council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Streets shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbed sidewalks as per Director of City Engineer. No special conditions or variances required. And so, those are all the conditions.
Thank you.
I'd like to just before I make a motion, I appreciate the historical and the utilitarian context of this project and the economic impact that it's going to have on the city as well as the social engagement that it's going to bring to our community. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Who was that? Zach second? Okay. All right. Yulitz Chekov?
Yes.
Carolina Melendez?
Yes.
Suzanne Secord Ludwig?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Zach Rafe?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything? No?
Chris?
Just the papers.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Just the papers.
Just kind of flip them, yeah.
In the interest of time, I'll just come up here and I wanted to just say congratulations on becoming the chairman. What have we got to do to get these meetings virtual remote access?
We're taking under consideration. It's up to the council.
It's up to the who?
The City Council.
Okay. Do you support having virtual meetings, having access?
I will take it under advisement. Whatever the council goes with is fine. I'll support their decision.
I guess I'm asking if you have an opinion.
Not necessarily right now.
Okay, so you're open to it?
I'm open to it.
Okay. Well, I'll speak to the City Council about it. I hope you will too. That's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.